I hereby open the work session of the Springfield Planning Commission. We have our. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Rhodes Die.
Present.
Vice Chair Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Salazar.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Commissioner Stout. And Commissioner Weber.
Present.
Do we have any? Oh, we don't have an agenda for this. So we have our one agenda item, which is the wastewater master plan. You ready for us?
I think I am. That's all right. And could we get the slideshow, please? Thank you. Good evening. I'm Molly Markarian, Senior Planner and Project Manager for the Wastewater Master Plan Update Project. I think I know most of you, but some of you maybe not. I've worked with the city for almost 17 years, doing a variety of planning roles. With me tonight is Jeff Pascal. He is now the Community Development Director. But when the project started, he was a city engineer and he continued in the Lead Engineering Support role for this project. Since the city's wastewater master plan is not a land use plan, you might be asking why we are bringing it forward tonight as an item. There are a few reasons. One being that facility master planning is an essential component to help us plan for growth in Springfield. And so we wanted to make the Planning Commission aware of the most recent analysis for future wastewater collection system improvement needs. Also, the Planning Commission participates in the review and making a recommendation to the City Council on the Capital Improvement Program every two years. And that includes projects that are derived from the various master plans, such as the city's wastewater master plan. Also, another land use plan, the Public Facilities and Services Plan, is required to include wastewater treatment facilities and primary collection systems. And again, we will be amending the PFSB once the City Council adopts a final wastewater master plan. And then finally, in your role as the Committee for Citizen Involvement in 2022, the Planning Commission provided feedback on the project's community engagement plan. Next slide, please. This evening, we will share an overview of the Wastewater Master Plan Update Project, highlight planned content, summarize community outreach efforts and feedback themes, review next steps, and be available for questions. The city owns and operates a large and complex wastewater collection system, including approximately 250 miles of wastewater pipe, varying in size from 6 to 60 inches in diameter, and 16 pump stations. I'm going to assume that most of you know what a pump station is, but if anyone does not, they basically lift the water up or the wastewater up and push it down through the next series of pipes throughout the city. This system of... Oh, I should also note that the city of Springfield has an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Eugene to maintain Springfield's pump stations. This system of pipes and pump stations moves wastewater from Springfield homes and businesses to the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission, or MWMC, regional wastewater treatment plant in North Eugene, where wastewater from the Eugene-Springfield area is cleaned before its return to the Willamette River. Springfield's wastewater collection system serves an estimated 69,000 people through approximately 27,000 residential, commercial, and industrial connections. The effective conveyance and treatment of wastewater is critical to the health and vitality of the Springfield community, surrounding water quality, and the local environment. Guided by the city's Capacity Management Operations and Maintenance, or CMOM, program, the city operates, maintains, inspects, and cleans Springfield's wastewater collection system. The CMOM program helps preserve and extend the life of wastewater infrastructure, as well as prevent overflows of wastewater into local parks, yards, streets, and waterways, also known as sanitary sewer overflows, or SSOs. The city uses a hydrologic and hydraulic computer model and various inspection techniques to identify locations where maintenance holes and pipes can be repaired to reduce groundwater and stormwater entering the wastewater system that would otherwise increase flow conveyed to the wastewater treatment plant. That's known as infiltration and inflow, or INI. Next slide, please. As noted in Attachment 1 of your packet, the briefing memo, a system this extensive takes a lot of planning, construction, maintenance, and dollars. Cities plan infrastructure like this by creating long-term master plans that present data collected to assess what we have, present an analysis of what we need, recommend projects to address those needs, and outline how to support such projects, including how to pay for them. Within Springfield's Urban Growth Boundary, or UGB, the city is required to manage wastewater and meet water quality standards set by federal, state, and local law. Given that the city of Springfield, city of Eugene, and MWMC operate under one National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit, Springfield must manage the wastewater collection system flows and projected infiltration and inflow to not exceed the capacity of MWMC's facilities. Springfield must also ensure that pump station overflows or backups only occur under extreme conditions and operate under a CMOM program. The city's wastewater master plan was last updated in 2008, with a planning horizon at that time of 2025. Leading up to this update, the city had constructed all identified rehab and preservation capital improvement projects, several upgrades and expansion projects to support growth. Additionally, the Jasper Trunk Sewer Phase 3, 70th Street and 72nd Street wastewater basin rehab projects, and wastewater improvements for the Mill Street project are currently in the design phase and are anticipated for construction in 2024 or 2025. Additional drivers motivating this update include the 2014 Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development's acknowledgment of the Phase 1 Glenwood Refinement Plan, designation and rezoning of approximately 270 acres of land, as well as the 2019 Department of Land Conservation and Development's acknowledgment of Springfield's urban growth boundary expansion that included approximately 780 acres of land. And then also the 2019 Oregon Legislature, both House Bill and Senate Bills, that expanded the ability of property owners to densify their properties in R1 land use districts. The goal of this update, then, was to recommend programmatic and system improvements to meet the city's projected population and employment growth through a new 20-year planning horizon, which for this plan is through 2045. Next slide, please. While this project formally kicked off in early 2022, the city used a competitive Request for Proposals process, RFP process, in late 2021 to seek professional engineering services to assist the city with the project. The City Council awarded that contract to Consor, formerly Murray Smith, in February of 2022. Staff then developed a draft community engagement plan for the project and sought input from the Committee for Citizen Involvement, as I mentioned earlier. The rest of 2022 was focused on the technical steps to update the computer model. I'm not going to go into all the technical aspects of that, but some items that may be of interest to the Planning Commission are the four conditions that the project team used to build out the future condition scenarios, considering impacts to the city's wastewater system. One, development and redevelopment based on projected population and employment growth within the existing wastewater system; two, development and redevelopment based on projected population and employment growth outside the existing wastewater system but within the urban growth boundary; and estimated infiltration and inflow in those areas; connection of verified septic tanks within the existing wastewater system and urban growth boundary; and an assumed 3% growth in population density in the R1 land use districts due to the House Bill and Senate Bill that I mentioned earlier. Building upon those steps, in 2023, the project team analyzed the wastewater collection system's capacity so that they could identify deficiencies or areas with wastewater surcharge potential during the design storm under existing and future conditions. And then moved on to identifying capital improvement projects to increase capacity and eliminate those deficiencies. And then looked at analyzing the CMOM program, developing a strategic financial plan, and then finally drafting the actual master plan document. In anticipation of wastewater master plan adoption earlier this year, some of the identified rehabilitation needs were considered in the most recent Capital Improvement Program update. Additionally, consideration of the strategic financial plan went into the recommendations that went to the City Council recently regarding local wastewater rates for fiscal year 25. Let's see. Next slide, please. As outlined in the Community Engagement Plan, the city provided opportunities at key project milestones for Springfield community members and project partners to review draft materials, ask questions, and provide input on the project. At the project kicked off, the city launched a project webpage to provide project information in a visual and easy-to-understand manner in one location. Staff maintained and updated the webpage throughout the project and encouraged community members to visit that webpage to learn about the project, review the draft plan, sign up to receive news by email, and learn about opportunities to ask questions and share feedback on the draft plan. Staff also created and posted handouts and frequently asked questions to share key messages, project information, and answer common questions. The initial community outreach in 2022 focused on general project information distribution to inform the community that the city had embarked on a project to update the wastewater master plan and through that would identify needed improvements to the local wastewater system. We also shared information on how to learn more about the project and provide input to the project. A lot of this outreach that we did was electronic, but we also shared my contact information so that folks could reach out via phone or snail mail as well. The initial outreach distribution is noted in, on Page 4 of Attachment 1 in your packet and included information in the wastewater and stormwater rates information that gets inserted into the subbills in the summertime, also the MWMC and Development and Public Works newsletters. Wider consultation with the community and wastewater system users occurred once the plan was drafted. To share information about the draft plan, invite folks to engage with a 15-minute online survey intended to collect information about community priorities on wastewater investments. The survey was also a way to engage community members in what the city is doing and how valuable the wastewater collection system service is. We made printable versions of the survey available upon request also. And we inform the public that additional feedback can be formally submitted through the normal public hearing process, which will occur later this summer. Formats used to inform the community are noted on Page 4 of Attachment 1 in your packet. Just like to note that in publicizing the survey, we clarified that the city is required to provide effective wastewater treatment services. So these services are not optional. And so we were not asking if we should do the work, but noted that community feedback can affect where some development takes place and which funding sources the City Council ultimately chooses to fund this work. We received 53 complete survey submissions. And then on Pages 4, 5, and 6 of Attachment 1 in your packet are highlights of that feedback. If you have any questions related to those highlights, we can talk about them at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. The draft wastewater master plan identifies what we must do to keep the wastewater system running today and growing with us over the next 20 years. After outlining the research we did to come to those conclusions, the plan's recommendations for Springfield's wastewater collection system fall into the following six areas of consideration: near-term, intermediate-term, and long-term capital improvements; updates to Springfield's Capital Improvements Program to design and build the 20 pump station and system improvements identified; the plan also has a chapter dedicated to the evaluation of and recommended changes to city policies and procedures to support the effective preservation, replacement, and rehabilitation of Springfield's wastewater collection network; and finally, the plan provides a range of financial data so the City Council can decide how to pay for the recommended improvements to a Springfield's wastewater collection system. The funding options developed were done with consideration to rate impacts on community members and businesses. And the strategic financial plan elements are intended to serve as a benchmark in reference for the city's budgeting, capital planning, and rate-setting decisions. Next slide, please. The City Council work session and public hearing on the final draft of the wastewater master plan are scheduled for June 24th and July 1st, respectively. Following City Council adoption of a plan, the city will initiate an amendment of the Eugene-Springfield Metropolitan Area Public Facilities and Services Plan to incorporate the applicable wastewater master plan recommendations. Next slide, please. Thank you. And any questions? I would... Yeah, or have Sandy address that? She was very involved in that process.
Sure. So with the middle housing legislation that passed, the statute included language about 3% growth as being something that we could rely on within land use decisions based on that middle housing densification. And so that seemed, given that we hadn't had the new rules in place for very long for within our code, it seemed a reasonable assumption to make to just rely on that state number. And so that's why we used the 3% for the areas that would allow that middle housing. So those are the R1 zoning district that aren't in the steep slopes.
I believe that Christina put a response in the chat maybe just then?
Just a reminder to unmute your microphone before you ask questions, because the last question wasn't unmuted, and so those of us on Zoom were unable to hear it.
Commissioner Stowe.
Thank you, Chair. Great presentation, Molly. It's I really appreciate knowing what the approach is and seeing how you're proactively thinking through one of the most crucial pieces of our infrastructure. My questions, I apologize, are just a little bit more in background. When we have the intergovernmental agreement with Eugene, does that mean that Eugene is doing the maintenance or that it's just being funded by Springfield and Eugene, respectively? Could you just kind of tease out exactly how that works? And I guess a follow-up to that question is also, I know that everything is governed by one permit that's issued nationally. Does that permit change at all throughout the course of, you know, depending on population and that sort of thing? Or could you... Is there anything about that permit that changes depending on factors locally?
So circling back first to how the IGA works, I should point out that the actual, the IGA is included, I think, like, I think it's a tat, Appendix E of the draft wastewater master plan, if you would like to see more details. But essentially, the city of Springfield pays for the staff who work on the MWMC facilities to also maintain Springfield's pump stations, since they are more in the habit of doing that. So that's like the simplistic answer to that part. And then in terms of the permit, I do not believe that local conditions are necessarily of consideration for that permit. It comes from the... I mean, it's through the federal government, but it comes through the state. And so there are statewide policy implications for that permit. But I don't know if you have other thoughts, Jeff?
Yeah, I don't. I know there are federal updates every once in a while, and we can probably get a little bit more information from the ESD program manager, who manages those updates for MWMC. It's in essence a permit that for all three entities, MWMC, Eugene, and Springfield. And so it's probably based on population size, the type of system we have and that. But it's, I will say, from my understanding, when I talked to Matt Stoudt, who is the director of ESD, that wastewater is not as volatile as far as big changes and things like that, like we're seeing in stormwater, if that makes sense. There are some things coming down that may be affected locally, and it depends. You probably heard a lot about these forever chemicals, PFAS and PFOS. And so one of the things that DEQ and EPA is looking at is how to regulate those and looking at wastewater to get it out of the system instead of, you know, also looking at point source, but really they're looking at that sort, you know, filtering and that. And it's going to probably affect more on stormwater, but there could be a potential that you see it in future wastewater permits.
Thank you for the background. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair. This may have been in the packet, and it was long. Sorry. I tried to look at some of it. But the question, currently, there's 16 pump stations. Is that correct? And then the project shows for 20 pump stations. Is that correct? It was like seven and six, or six and seven and six. I was just, is that adding four more pump stations? Or is it more than that? Or?
It's not necessarily adding more pump stations. It may be addressing the capacity of particular ones.
There are, I'm trying to think without looking in the project sheet, there probably are about four new pump stations, like North Gateway. That requires a pump station. There's already a pump station in the current master plan that's adopted in 2008 that is for the Peace Health area. That requires a new pump station. There's one out at Harvard Drive. I'm trying to think. There are about four and 16 that we currently have. But there are, there are currently things that we need to do to update capacity, to update the electronics and all of the mechanics within those pump stations to bring them up to current standards. And so that's why you might see 20 projects, because there are pump stations that we do need to upgrade. One thing that pump stations used to be, I say pump station or lift station, we have both. Lifts lifted up, it's just gravity after that. A pump station pumps it through a pipe for a certain distance through a pressure pipe. So there's two different styles. But one of the things that used to occur when these first went in, you know, 30, 40 years ago, is if there was a large storm, rainstorm, and those things became overcapacity, they were connected to the storm system. That was the overflow. A few years back, about 10 years ago, EPA and DEQ came and said zero overflow, which meant we could no longer discharge just stormwater in a major storm event. So some of that, some of those upgrades too, is to disconnect those and figure out capacity needs and redundancy needs to make sure that we don't have overflows to the street or storm system.
Thank you.
Thanks again for that presentation. It was super helpful. My question is also a little bit piggybacking off of Chair Rhodes Die's question about densification. Just knowing that we're currently in a process of climate-friendly and equitable communities that we're in that process of selecting targeting areas for targeted densification and that that process will not be wrapped up by the time this plan is adopted and that any likely densification would probably be on the later half of this 20-year plan. Is there any ability for this plan to contemplate that densification in targeted areas maybe very rapidly and be flexible to that?
This particular plan cannot. The future, I mean, in theory, we try to do our updates, you know.
I think the best way to answer that is staff. This is, and with Sandy's help and looking at population and density, we've looked at trends with when we adopted the ADU standards and where we were seeing ADUs. I think, I thought about this. When, it's one of these things. It's why we put it in this master plan. It's because with the state changing the rules all the time, this is, this plan is a lot different than our 2008 plan. Our 2008 plan was built on, well, here's what the zoning is. Here's what the drainage unit fixtures that we can realistically expect based on that zoning and population. This took that into an account, and then we sat around and worked with our consultant to try and come up with a, I guess, a conservative number. So when I look at this, I don't see, I don't really have a lot of concerns that we're going to suddenly go, this development can't occur because we don't have wastewater capacity, or we're going to, either there's going to be a large expense. I think what it may do is speed up the timeline on some of those projects that we see that are long-term and midterm, but that happens all the time. Because we, we as staff, we try to predict where development's going to occur. Like, we look at Glenwood and go, okay, well, that's a big focus of council right now. So we're going to, you know, move those projects into the near term. Well, that may not happen. We weren't anticipating. You know, there's just areas where we can't assume or we know where development, where developers may develop. And so we may have to shift projects around later in the CIP. And that's where that five-year planning in that CIP becomes very important, is trying to stay tuned. But yeah, we've thought about this from a capacity, and I don't see a real capacity issue. I think that question comes in, and that's where we get, where the importance comes in, in the rehab, in the CMOM. And why, when working with Molly and we developed this, was bringing some of those CMOM policies into the master plan was thinking through that. So removing the INI is very important so that we increase our capacity for actual
so that we increase our capacity for actual sewage instead of treating stormwater, sending stormwater to the plant. Because one thing we do know is to upgrade the plant to add capacity is super expensive. It's the same customer base. It's probably cheaper again to address it at the point, which is make sure our system's tight and we're tightening. And so I think that's where having those C mom pieces in there. So where we're basically reclaiming some of that capacity from stormwater for actual wastewater is important.
Thanks. That's really helpful. Understand it's really hard. It's a hard process in general to do a 20 year plan for anything because you don't have a crystal ball for what, especially as you look further out to the 20th, 19th and 20th year. It's tough, tough to.
Yeah, I, I think the other thing that we are trying to be better about and some of that is just resources. And so it's been great to have a, a, a infrastructure planner. Because one of our goals when we adopted the 2008 master plan, that master plan was over, when that was finally adopted, I think our old, our first master plan or a night was a 1980 master plan. And so our goal is to try and revisit this thing in that 10 year period. So the goal would be to not wait 16 years before we address this, but, but do more update sooner. And so that, that's kind of that critical piece and just making sure that we're not letting it sit and collect dust, especially in the dynamic, in the way things are being dynamic with development and in some of the ways the planning rules are changing.
So along the lines, Mr. Salazar's question in terms of where your focus is. So you've got the plan, you've got it all together, and then somebody wants to stick a multi-unit development out someplace where there's not capacity. Are you driven by that? Or are you just say, sorry, can't do it? No capacity?
Well, I think it's, so we have capacity. The system has capacity. A lot of when we talk about growth is getting the system there. So Jasper Natron's a great example. When I first started the city of Springfield in 2004, the sewer stopped at 42nd Street and Jasper Road. That was the end of the sewer. Since I've been here, we've now extended that sewer to about 1500 feet beyond Mount Vernon. So that opens up that whole area to development. So say, let, let's say North Gateway was ready and something came in. The key would be a policy question or a question for the council is a developer could come in and fund everything. They could, and there's capacity at the plant, there's capacity in the system and the pipes with the upgrades. If they, they do the upgrades, it would be identified to serve that area. And yeah, if a developer had deep enough pockets and enough cash, they could do it all themselves. So I think that question, what you're asking, that question comes up is, do we redirect city resources that we are planning through the C I P to that area? And that's a, that's a council question. Or do we tell the developer, if you want to do that, you do that on your own? And those are those kinds of conversations about how, where's that public participation come in in those projects? And where do we direct our resources? So same thing, we're giving, we're trying to give the best information we can to the council so that we try and anticipate. And so we may come back with a different recommendation depending on finances. And that, that's where I think what's different too with this master plan and what we've done is developing that strategic financial plan. If you look back at previous master plans, it just gave you, you know, here's $40 million worth of projects in 2008. I think it was 40 or 60 and, but it never really addressed, how do we pay for that? So what are our options to build that if we said we want to build this in the next 20 years? And so I think that strategic financial plan gives us the tools to look at, pull a little, a lot of different levers, look at all of our funding resources, including developer contributions. So then we can provide the best information, the best financial information for the system so that we can maintain rates at a reasonable level and still accomplish all of the work that we need to do is, that's identified in here.
So in terms of infiltration, is that pretty well under control or is it still quite a problem?
We still have quite a few areas. So there's two things. So we've identified a few areas. There's, as Molly mentioned, there's a couple of projects that are currently in, being worked on. So there's two types of modeling. We've identified big key areas where we have functional issues that we have to address. And the ones that are critical are in that near term. We're also continually modeling our system and we're continually collecting data. And so what we call, we call that micro basin. The, the hydraulic model in here is, is citywide and it's, it's a macro hydraulic model. Even it has better data than it did in 2008 because we collected more information at key locations. So what we are doing now is we're also now getting out to neighborhoods. We're calling that micro basin modeling. And so we're really identifying those key areas. And yes, we do have a lot of areas where we are still seeing a lot of I N I. We'll probably never get rid of all of it, but we're trying to get it down to a reasonable number. One, one thing we're also trying to do to figure out the effectiveness of our methods of reducing I N I is doing pre and post construction, get information gathering flow data. And so, so we're, we're still continuing to work on that. This, this master plan identifies that. But if you look in the C mom piece, we have 130 miles of pipe that are concrete that are from 1965 to 1985 in vintage. And that pipe has reached the end of its useful life in essence. I mean, a, a concrete pipe tickle typically you look at that because they're rubber gaskets and, and just cracks. You usually get 40 to 50 years. So you figure one of our first priorities, and that's where that financial model comes in too, is to try and go out and, and start reducing that number and working on replacing lining, doing what we can to ensure that that asset that we have in the ground is viable for the foreseeable future without having major fail, failures.
So you, so you say you can identify at certain strategic points where the infiltration might be occurring. In other words, you've got one out here. It's, it's somewhere over here. So you're monitoring some of that infiltration?
Yeah, we can figure out what basin.
Okay.
Can't necessarily figure out the exact point source. We, we can if you TV it sometimes, once you know what basin, we can TV it. If you TV it at the right time of year, and I've looked at several pipes, that's not something that is enjoyable for a lot of people. But you review videotape of a pipe and when it's after a storm, you can see where water is gushing in, where it shouldn't be coming from. So yeah, once we identify through the flow data, this basin, especially after a storm, you see spikes. A lot of it, we use the runtime data at pump stations and lift stations. So you can see how much flow is flowing through that pump station. Then you can figure out that area, that contributing area to that pump station. There's more water than just the wastewater coming from the residences and businesses.
Is that one of the reasons for the camera crew? I mean, that you're wanting to add, is that going to be a help?
So that's also a requirement under our permit. So that's something they've added. That's part of the C mom program of maintaining a C mom program is that we are out there TVing on a regular basis, all of our pipes to make sure that they're functioning and that they, either they need to be cleaned or, or what, we're identifying that future work. So that is another reason. So one of the things, we have one TV crew for 250 miles of pipe, one TV crew. So I think, and, and by the time we pull them to the projects we want to do, they're not getting to just what they need to do on their annual rotation. Because the other thing, when we do projects, we usually, our engineers want to look at the pipes before they design it. And so that's one of the things we're sending them requests. So yes, that is part of that and that's meeting our permit requirements and, and what's written in our C mom document.
So I assume you can't identify chemical infiltration as, as easily as you can the flow. So if you've got some chemical getting into the system, you can't necessarily find it until it gets, until it gets to the, what, the plant itself? And you, you see it's there, but you can't?
So chemicals different. So we send chemicals all the time. So if you take like development, just take trash enclosures are required to be connected to wastewater system so that anything that is, is not, it shouldn't be in the stormwater system is not getting into the storms water system. So yeah, I, I, we're not looking for chemicals. We have a pre-treat program that's there, that's run through MWMC, through our environmental services divi- division, and that's their job. And so when industries come in that have chemical point loads, they're required to do pre-treat so that it doesn't go to the plant. And so that's, that's not in the area that's not managed really on the local level. That's managed through our environmental services division.
You mentioned something, can't remember what it was, some chemical was getting into that you were identifying.
Oh, PFAS. Yeah, that's, that's because of drinking water. So PFAS forever chemicals and it's identified. I mean, if you go look at the articles, it's, it's, it's been identified as contributing to several types of cancer. And so it's really, right now, the federal government has put in, EPA has put in restrictions on how much can be the tolerable amounts in, in drinking water. And so if they're starting to be identified sources or it's identified, I'm not certain that we'll identify the source because it's everywhere. It's been around since the 40s and that's why they're forever chemicals. It's how do we filter that out? How do we treat that? How do we keep that from getting back into the drinking water source?
You mean, it's so prolific, you can't identify where more specific spots?
Unless you go out and you find a, an old transformer and it's leaking right, right there, that maybe you find that. But as far as the older chemicals, I mean, firefighting foam that was used for training and all that, that's just in the ground and everywhere. It's there forever.
So, you know, in terms of the figuring out what the charge, so does the, this is maybe a broader question than it's fair to ask. But if the city identifies how much a particular house or unit should be paying in terms of all the property taxes and such, is there a model such that you identify what would be appropriate? And then try to match back to all the services that the city must perform, including wastewater? Is there, is that a model you use or?
No, so the financial model, so for one, property taxes, there are, are no property taxes that go towards wastewater. Our wastewater revenue sources are user fees and development services or development.
Charges.
Charges. Sorry about that. And so we modeled that based on that. And then for expansion projects, there's potential contribution from that developer for that specific project. And so that's how it's based. And so basically what we took was all of the projects in here plus all of the C mom work. And we planned that out for 20 years. And we said, okay, what's that take as a starting point? Just to say conservative level, all, or conservative model, all of the waste water master plan gets built in 20 years and all of the septic systems get connected, which means all of the urban growth area is an ecstasy. So that's a conservative way to look at it since this is the master plan. That's probably not realistic, even in the next 20 years that all that happened. But then we threw that in there and then we figured out with what would the, with the revenues from development fees and the revenues from, and what would we need to have in user fees to fund that? It showed us over the next 10 years with all of our reserves and everything else, about 11% rate increase steady for the next 10 years. That's probably not reasonable. So we look at what projects can we reasonably push out? What work can we push out and what's a, what's a reasonable look at that future? But it, it really was devised as a tool so that we can make sure, because currently we have a very healthy fund for wastewater and we want to maintain that healthy fund and accomplish all the work we have with reasonable rates. And so it really is just a, a tool for us to look at all the inputs so that we can bring the most appropriate information and best information to both the budget committee and the city council.
So, so I guess I'm asking you, if you take, so it sounds like you're saying you, you're looking at the appropriateness of the, of the fees based on where you are at now, not on what load they might be on the particular house or what have you. You're following me? In other words, you're saying, well, you're going to 11% increase, you think is appropriate, but that doesn't identify. I, I'm not sure this is wrong.
That's not how, yeah. So I think what you're asking is, do we have a tiered rate system? So if one house is, has a higher, heavier load or provide, has more wastewater flow than another house? If I'm understanding you correct, do we tier our system?
Well, I guess generally what I'm saying is, is, you know, we're trying to get people into houses and every dollar that we put on a house is a barrier to housing. And so I'm wondering if we even look at what that appropriate level for a given house is and whether you then extrapolate that through to what the fee should be. I'm not saying it's easy. I'm just.
Yeah. Are you, are you describing system development charges so that the, so? Correct. I mean, and then that is a conversation on what the right level of system development charges versus wastewater fees. And that'll probably be the next conversation with the council as we look at this list of projects is, does the fee stay the same? Do we increase the fee? And, and that's a policy question that we'll have to work through with the council because you're right. What, what is the right mix of fees? I, I'm not saying system development charges should go pay for everything and they're probably not going to zero. But what is that right mix? Because we also have existing users and how much should existing users support growth, residential growth and even commercial growth? And so that's, that's a policy question that we'll have probably several discussions with the council to figure out what that comfort level is to keep the city competitive and, and keep user fees at a reasonable level as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you. That, that discussion actually bled right into my, my original question, which was revolve involving capacity. Per the planning commission briefing memo, it says that system development charges or S T Cs will fund the capacity needed for new development. I was just curious if the city has an existing S C waiver program? Or I think you, you touched on this already, that you're basically thinking about different priority levels to encourage different types of development. So that was my question. Are, are there different S C, S T C levels for industrial, commercial or residential development?
Yeah. So it's similar thing. It's, it's that policy question. We do have S T C waivers, but they are currently for only affordable housing. And there's, there's specific guidelines on for, on how those are met and achieved, those waivers. But yeah, you, you're correct. I, I think that, that's why I said that's a policy question. So it's, you know, we don't want to drive development out or stall development with too high of S T Cs. But we also, it, it's that balance and that's, that's why it's, that's a council decision on what that right mix is. And that's why we want to provide them with the best information because we also don't want to overburden the current users as well and make the cost of wastewater service so exorbitant that we're starting to see people want to leave the city or, you know, dealing with that issue.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chair Rhodes Di, over here.
Oh, yeah.
I'll just, on the S T C waivers, we have two programs. One is for accessory dwelling units and the other one is for low income homeownership.
So those are dollar limited, right? Not, I mean, there's a, there's a fixed dollar amount for those budgeted?
There's not a fixed dollar amount for the S T C waiver for ADUs. There is a time limit. So we give council an annual check in on how we're doing on those. They've extended it a couple of times. And then for the homeownership, yes, there is a dollar amount.
Thank you. Okay. Sounds like that's the end of your presentation, right? Thank you so much. That was very detailed and informative.
Thank you.
Should we just move right into the regular meeting?
We can move into the regular meeting or you can take a break. It's up to you. We didn't set a time specific for the regular meeting. So if you want to move on right now, we can do that.
Let's do that. Yeah, okay. I hear I opened the regular meeting of the Springfield Planning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Schmuck?
Here.
Chair Rhodes Di?
Here.
Vice Chair Buck?
Present.
Commissioner Salazar?
Present.
Commissioner Weber?
Present.
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
And Commissioner Stout?
Here.
Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Let's move into the pledge of allegiance. For those in attendance, please, please recite the pledge and those online stay muted, please. So for the approval of the minutes from the last meeting, are there any corrections to the? are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? Hearing none, the minutes from the previous meeting are approved. Doesn't look like we have any business from the audience.
No, not at this time.
Okay. We will now hear business from the Planning Commission. Are there any reports of council actions?
Chair, I have one.
Great.
It's my report on the city council meeting from yesterday, June 3rd. I guess, yeah, June 3rd, where there was a planning, a work session. It was a brief executive session, but there was a work session. Oh goodness. Honestly, I forgot on the work session, but the, the real relevant piece was from the actual planning or was the actual city council meeting where there were four different annexations that were discussed. One of them was right next to Thurston, Thurston Elementary School, which is a, currently just a private piece of property and it is undeveloped. They're considering that for developments. So there's an annexation would be required for that. That had one speaker who shared some concerns. Two other ones were very run-of-the-mill, nothing much, just, just very small adjustments. But there, the entire council chambers were full of a possible annexation at Pheasant's, it's a Pheasant Lane over in kind of North Gateway area. It's the west of the hospital, but east of Gateway. And almost every single neighbor showed up with their concern about turning an old railroad track into a developed, a developed area, which would include a number of duplexes and also eliminate a facility that many of the residents enjoy, basically as a walking area for dogs and that sort of thing, but also would extremely limit their privacy. So it was a dynamic meeting, to say the least.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other reports of council action? Or any other business from the Planning Commission? Hearing none?
Chair, I apologize.
Go ahead.
I, I have one other business, which is that as of the last primary election, I was elected to the city council starting in 2025. And so I will maintain my planning commission post until the end of this year, at which point I will vacate, but I'm gonna enjoy the ride as long as I can.
Thanks for sticking with us. How about business from the Development and Public Works Department?
The only thing I have to share with you this evening is your upcoming meetings. So on June 18th, we have a work session for you on climate-friendly areas. So it should be pretty interesting bringing to you the work that our staff and consultants have done on the four potential areas and asking if we should continue to consider all four areas or if we're ready to narrow them down. We'll be going to city council soon thereafter. And so taking your recommendation on that to council for their consideration. It's not a public hearing, but we have done a lot of public outreach and so some of that will be summarized for you as well. And then on July 2nd, we have a Plan Amendment Zone Change as a public hearing. We may also have a work session, not sure yet on that meeting. But we do have agenda items for your next two meetings. I'm hoping to give you just one meeting in July, but we'll still, we're still waiting to see what comes up. But stay tuned. And we would like to at least take a picture of those of you who are here so that we can have that. And then maybe at some point in the future, we'll get a full commission in person for another picture. So that's what I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. If we don't have any other business, I will adjourn the Planning Commission regular meeting.